Board of Education regular meeting to order on Monday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven o'clock P. M. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, and Susie. Jennifer is absent. At this time we move on to the pledge of allegiance and prayer by daily. Brett, you're a darling. Attention, salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head with me for prayer. In the Father's name, thank you for this day and thank you for each and every one of y'all. And I ask that you watch over each person and keep them healthy through this time. In the Father's name, amen.
Thank you so much.
They must say right there, I gotta take your picture. All right. I got a picture.
I don't want to say.
Hold back the other side.
All right, but thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Or you can stay, we'll be done in about three hours.
If it wasn't for you.
I'm going to go home.
Bye.
Okay, at this time we move to the approval of the minutes of the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting.
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the minutes from the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. It's time to move on to approval of encumbrances.
Okay, if you look on the first page, the main thing on that page, and there's very few encumbrances this month, is there's National After School Association, Caesar's Palace in Las Vegas, and then American Airlines, and these are all, that'll be Michelle Moore and one more going to, on the Century Twenty-One grant, they're required to go to a national conference. So that's their accommodations to attend that national conference. And then the, on page two, I believe you see just Juan Shannon Webster. And if you remember, we, Shannon moved from cafeteria to custodial, so her salary before was in child nutrition, so we just needed to encumber the remainder of her this year's salary for her out of the general fund. And then page three, the third page, is Webster's heat and air. And middle school cafeteria, we have two big air units, and just here a while back, we had one of them go out, or we had to have repairs done, and both of them, and then right before Christmas, the other one went, had problems, and just gonna cost about time to replace them. And so that, that's the second one, for parts, labor, everything, and that's a big unit up there, and to take care of that, and that's out of child nutrition fund because it's cafeteria. And then the last page, you see Melissa Hale and Gloria Lefler, and these are two new cafeteria workers, and this is encumbering the money to pay them throughout the rest of the school year. And that's encumbrances.
Make a motion to approve the encumbrances.
Second.
Question made by David, seconded by Brett to approve the encumbrances as listed. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Move on to other financial reports.
Okay, we look right up here, and first of all, a little bit of good news. It's time for midterm adjustments. I don't know if you remember last year, we lost money at the midterm, a little over two hundred thousand dollars because of so many more students going virtual. So Epic and others, virtual schools pulled more out of the pool last year. Well, there were three virtual schools coming into this year, and there's a rule in the funding formula, if you lose fifteen percent or more of your A D M from the end of last year till October one of this year, then you have to go on this year's numbers. So they were inflated last year, throughout the year, their ending number was inflated. They were well above that fifteen percent less numbers of kids this year than last year, so they lost, there were three of them that lost pretty substantially in their funding. So that all goes back into the pool, and then is redistributed. So our part of that, if you look here, just penciled in, our initial allocation, this state allocated money's about half of our revenue. So our budget this year will be around ten point three million, you can see it's about half. Our initial allocation was five million, fifty thousand dollars. We, they come back after January, just last week, and reallocated after what I just talked about, and now ours for this year is five billion, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, so a difference of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. So that's a little bit of good news for this year. When we look at this month comparable to last year, this is, kind of took us up the extra because it's the time of year we pay our extra duty stipends for different duties throughout the district that are not contracted in. We pay those in December and then again at the end of the year, so that brought that up. You could see just a little bit, a little bit more than this time last year, and this, the reason that we looked at, we compared these two, and the reason is we had more overtime. We're, we had a custodian leave at the elementary and we're filling in there, and then also more substitutes, we noticed this December compared to last. So we were over this year thirty-three thousand on salaries. Down here on bills, we were at forty-five thousand for December as compared to eighty last year, so we were under this year, thirty-five eight. So we were just a couple thousand spent this year than December of last year. So we're still sitting at about, we're in the good, about ninety-five thousand, six hundred dollars there for the year. So still in relatively good shape there. And then we look, and you can kind of see our balances here that we go over every month, about one point seven six in general fund at the end of December, still steady right here at nine ninety in the building fund, and then one seventy-nine in child nutrition. One of the things that we'll try to do, we'll have probably by February, is a pretty good estimation of our start, when we start getting our ad valorem in, that kind of thing. We should be getting that Red Bud funding, which is additional funding into the building fund, but we should start being able to get some pretty good estimates on the revenue for the year. So I'm kind of looking forward to seeing that first, and we should have that for you in February. That's other financials.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns? All righty. This time we move on to public comment. Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B E D dash R. No one present for that. Information items, a superintendent's reports.
Okay, we've been really good on our COVID numbers this year so far. We've kind of lapped a little bit, I guess, coming out of Christmas break, and when you look on the news and things, they kind of predict that this will go through in February. And so I looked at these, I actually changed these numbers a couple times today because we, we lost some kids going home and a couple of staff also today. So, but by the end of the, today, we had, our total numbers out today, I just checked, what are your total numbers out versus who has reported they tested positive and who is quarantined? And our total numbers out today are, they're approaching between fourteen and fifteen percent, so we need to keep an eye on that. So, for instance, at the elementary, we had sixty-three absent today. Isolation, positive test, we had one student and two staff members, and then we have five on, on quarantine. Middle school, we had fifty-one out total today. We had four students isolated, one staff member isolated, and then six students quarantined. And at the high school is the one that's kind of been hit. Fifty-six total out today, twenty-three students isolated with positive test and three staff members, and then two students on quarantine. And as you can see these numbers as well as I can, when you first take it to middle school, you have fifty-one out today, there's four positive tests, I'm sure that number's gonna go up. Or people are, have those symptoms and haven't tested yet. So I, in today's world, I would, out of that fourteen to fifteen percent absent today, I'm assuming more of them are positive than have showed up yet. So we'll keep an eye on that, especially this week, and hopefully we can make it through. We do have two cafeteria workers out now, so we have to keep an eye on that. That's what closed us last year one time.
I'm not a very good cook, so don't.
We're taking, we were buttering you up.
I can eat, I can, I can eat, I'm not a chicken.
One interesting thing that I'd like to kind of put out there for you that, that was kind of a neat deal. In talking, if you remember, our One Act play team won state championship this year, and then, and I was visiting on the phone with Dr. Butler from superintendent at Wilberton, and she said, David, you know, we won that back in nineteen seventy-six? And I said, no, Dr. Butler, I think this is our first one. Of course, she said, David, I was the speech and drama teacher. And so we had a conversation about that, so I started researching it, and called up the high school and get an old yearbook, and, of course, they didn't have any, nineteen seventy-six, probably looked familiar. And they, of course, they burned up, there's their books in the fire, but, so I called down to Janice Williams, and sure enough, she brought me a, a copy, and we started researching in twofold. The high school burnt down, so the trophies burned up. Secondly, and this is so ironic, that the O S S A A had a different school on the website as winning that year. So that's kind of a double whammy against us. But, so, we have Missy Jennings in the office here that worked at O S S A A, so I said, who more perfect to research this? So she got on communicating with the gentleman at O S S A that supervises the One Act, and he said, no, Missy, it shows here that I forget who won. It was Class B state championship that year. And she said, well, we have in the yearbook, you know, they're sitting there with pitcher holding the trophy, and it's talking about it and all that. So he goes back to the old trusty, and it's marked in there, the old trusty book record, and he said, what, sure enough, Stigler won that year. So we are kind of in the, plus we had two all-state actors, actresses that year. And so we have tomorrow, John Block, it's the, he does the sports at the paper, he's coming down tomorrow, and we have Dr. Butler is coming over, so we're gonna have law enforcement at the county line. And she's coming over along with two of the students from that team.
Oh, really?
To meet, and I'm having, we're gonna head them off.
There.
Yeah, she's in two.
Melanie Allenbaum, Mary Evans. Same as my sister's class.
So, and then I have Casey Parsons and her two all-state actresses coming to that meeting, and he's gonna do a story, and they're gonna put it in the paper, I think, the twenty-seventh of January, which would be, that would be the same date as it, as it was originally put in the paper. How many ever?
Years.
Yeah, I'll count it up, forty-five there. And so that's gonna be neat tomorrow, they're all gonna be here at ten-thirty, but we wanna, we wanna get that trophy replaced, we're kind of in the process of that, and show that off, and then get our, make sure we honor our two all-staters also. So that's kind of a neat deal, and we're looking forward to.
Want to say that?
Yeah.
Yeah. We wanna, we wanna somehow in the future, I don't know that we'll have it done by the time basketball's over, but we'd like to make a presentation at some point to that, to any of those members that could come back. So we, we want another state championship this year, really, I guess, so.
Forty-five years later.
Facilities update, we have materials being delivered this Thursday, and representatives from M R C and Michael Riley will be here, and they're bringing a truck in to start getting things on site, to take care of the work that we have going on here in the next month or so. And then between now, kind of this time between tonight and next board meeting, I would like to kind of fine tune our facilities plan and bring that to the next board meeting, and kind of have a, kind of have a priority list, but then us look at this as a board and kind of get this, kind of set, what those priorities on that facilities plan will be. And we, I'd like to take into consideration our priority, you know, what's priority, and then also timing. You know, a lot of that's gonna come into play when we're, especially during the school year, what can we do? So we'll have that ready and present at the February board meeting.
Do you have a list of, like, do each principals, like, hit list on that, priority for each facility, like, they may have a top twenty for each facility?
We, when we first started, we, we went around to each, each site with the principals and people, and we just went through every site, and that was our, the original list that we brought. Now, we've able to mark through a lot of that because it's included in what we're getting ready to do. And then we'll, we'll take a look at what's remained, the remainder of that list, plus anything's been added, and then also talk about what our remedies will be at the elementary. Then, of course, January is Board Appreciation Month, and we'd like to thank each one of you guys, and Jennifer, for the work that you do. I as one have worked at a few different school systems, and this is the best I've worked at. And from day one, twenty-two years ago, we've just had some pretty good people on this board. And for folks that have not worked at other places, I don't know that you can really comprehend how, how well we have it here, and what a working relationship we have and respect. And so I think I speak for the faculty and staff when I say I appreciate you guys and the work that you do.
Appreciate you too.
Definitely.
Appreciate you. So it's superintendent's report, you want to take that home?
I was thinking nostalgia there, I'm really kind of getting into it. Okay, at this time we move on to action topics. Action topic A, consideration of Internet access statement and remote access certification for the twenty-two, twenty-three E rate application.
And we just, we have to sign off on this each year as board, and just basically, the Internet access statement and remote access certification, basically saying, anything provided by E rate Internet access service for which I seek discounts will be strictly limited to providing services only at eligible locations and used only by eligible users, and that's what we do. So we would recommend, just bring them there.
Make a motion to approve the remote access certification, twenty-two, twenty-three E rate application.
Second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept the Internet access statement and remove, uh, remote access certification for the twenty-two, twenty-three E rate application. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of waiving the absentee policy for the qualifying students.
Okay, you have a, a copy of, of this letter we receive every semester, and it includes all of the students that went over the ten-day policy and the ones that received a waiver for that policy because they presented adequate paperwork or whatever it was that accounted for that, and then the ones on the second page that, that went over that probably assess it that did not. We were very liberal, I guess, last year in this policy and trying to get back, kind of get back in the groove. So these are the attendance committee recommendations for fall semester attendance.
Make a motion to approve the waiving of the absentee policy for the qualifying students.
Question made by David, seconded by Brett, to waive the absentee policy for the qualified students. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of college remediation report and dropout report.
Okay, and I believe you guys have that whole report put out by the Office of Educational Quality and Accountability, and if you look up at the top left, you see community group, and we're in E two, which means that E stands for our population, and E is just schools that have between a thousand and two thousand students. And then the two stands, one is if you have less than fifty percent of your population economically disadvantaged, and two is if you're over fifty percent in that category. So we're, this just tells us that we're between a thousand and two thousand students, and we have over fifty percent economically disadvantaged. And what we must get, show that we've brought to the board are two on the back page, under additional high school performance measures. The first one that we look at tonight is the four-year dropout rate of the graduating class. And if you look at the first one, senior graduation rate, if you'll notice for our district, and I believe this was the class of two thousand and nineteen, we had a hundred percent graduation rate. Now, if you look at the statement right underneath that, four-year dropout rate of the graduating class, now that shows seven point one percent dropout rate. Well, that seems like it's contradicting to the upper statement there. But what that is, the four-year dropout rate for the graduating class, that's that four-year cohort. So they would, they would have to graduate in four years to not be considered a dropout. They've changed that now to where they give you credit for a five-year cohort dropout and a six-year, but for this report, if they don't graduate in four years, they go on that list as a dropout. So seven point one percent of our kids would have fit that category. Now, on the flip side of that, what this is telling you is, we're not giving up on those kids. They might have graduated in five years or six years, so, but all of them graduated within six years. So that's kind of the, kind of the method to those numbers there.
Of course, here, you, you'd obviously want zero, you don't want anybody to drop out, but, but we're below, if I'm reading this right, we're below the state average of nine point eight, right? So we're, is it, the high school state average on, is nine point eight percent?
Nine point eight percent.
So we're doing better than the, the state on average.
Right, and I think it's good to look at that community group average because, in a lot of categories, because what that is, is looking at, at schools like us. They're the same size, and they're the same socioeconomic status, pretty much. And so you look at the state, but if you say, well, I see that, but then look at the community group and how that.
She's wondering where you're at.
Yep. Over fifteen minutes. But that, the community group gives you another measure, just schools like us.
Which means you're even, based on that, we're doing good, obviously. You'd like to see that zero, which I'm sure is not achievable, but.
But you just want to keep after them and keep giving them opportunities, whether it be alternative or whatever that might be.
This goes back to correlate with what we just approved, all those kids that were on that second page that didn't get that waiver. Those will be into this percentage column right here next year if some, if we're not careful. You know what I mean? They'll, they'll end up in that because they're already so far behind, those students are, they're, you know, really struggling, whether it be at home or whatever it is. Anyway, those kids there will be the ones that, to me, that group is the ones that, you know, you need to.
There are a lot of.
And I don't know how to get a hold of those kids and how to show them the importance of their education, that's the problem, you know?
Hopefully, in, in my experience, a lot of those as freshmen and sophomores, that's when they, I, I didn't look at that point on that list of ones that didn't receive credit. But a lot of times because they've experienced social promotion their whole life, and they might fail every class, but they move on to the fifth grade or whatever. And when you get into, by law, when you get into high school, if you fail, you fail.
Yeah.
And that's a shell shock. High school's a big shell shock for, for kids, but that, and so, the good thing is, if they take seven a year for four years, they get eight, I mean, twenty-eight credits. So a semester's three and a half, so if they wipe out a semester, they still could graduate with, what is it, twenty-three and a half credits, and still have a cushion even just totally wrecking a semester. So if you get into, you're in that, on that list, and some of those are on that list for two classes or something, but if you totally wipe out a semester, you for sure want to get that kid on track before they do it again.
Somehow, yeah. Because that reflects and takes care of the rest of these from there down in our list here.
Yeah.
Because they're not going to college.
Right.
They're gonna bring the, your average G P A down to a two, which is probably, you know, you got twenty percent of your students that are probably above a two point five or a three, you know? And now you bring, so that's, you know, you're, you're just, you're just wiping out everything that you gained, you know, so I mean.
But we've got, if you take the alternative, we've got, when we catch those kids starting their junior year, and if they're behind, if they don't have enough credits to graduate, we, we've always brought them in the past several years, and we'll meet with them and a parent, say, hey, here's a, here's a opportunity, credit recovery, we'll enroll you in these classes online, you come in after school hours and work on them, we'll do, we get them started in September, they've got all year to catch up. So that's why we get from, we may not get done with all of them in four years, but you just have to, I mean, as a principal, one time I visited with a young lady. uh, that, that dropped out when she was sixteen, I saw her at the Choctaw Indian Festival. And, uh, talked to her and she's twenty-one, twenty-two. Did you ever finish up? No. Well, had her come back in next Tuesday and we enrolled her in that evening program and she walked across that stage, so.
There's a lot of success stories with those kids. They just get lost. That's what I was, when the gaming thing come up last board meeting, that kinda gave me some hope that some of this group of children, these, these guys would fit into that group and get focused back into school.
So many of them had, you know, their home life is, is reflective of all of that. One of the reasons why they're, where they are.
Yeah.
How you reach kids in the seventies are different than the nineties. And they're different than today.
They different.
And you, if you, if you get so hard-headed, you refuse to adjust, then you're gonna lose.
You gotta adjust it, yeah. Even the, like we were talking about, even the, the work we're gonna be doing at the school, that'll affect that also. You know, so all that affects this.
Right.
These numbers here.
You gotta do everything you can.
Yeah.
Um, so that's on dropout rate. And then down at the bottom, uh, the other one that, that we approved tonight is Oklahoma college freshman taking at least one remedial course in math, English, science, or reading, uh, on that, when they go to college. And this is pertaining to the classes two thousand seventeen through nineteen. And if you'll look at our district, thirty-two point four percent of ours that go to college, uh, take a remedial course in college. And most of those are gonna be math. Uh, as compared to thirty-five point seven percent in our community group and then thirty-two point nine statewide. And I wanna go ahead and, and point out, this is, on this page, this is the number that I feel is the, is the, not just because we're a little higher here, but that I think really tells what type of job we're doing. Uh, average number of Oklahoma college degrees conferred to high school students in, and this is in college year nineteen and twenty. Uh, thirty-five and, and I would love a, an illustration of vocational certifications and who just went straight into the workplace and were successful. But this is college and thirty-five of our nineteen, twenty, uh, students, uh, were, received a diploma as compared to twenty-nine point two on our community group and twenty-eight point five, uh, of our, of the state.
And how's it, I assume that's not the high school graduating year? Cause they, they don't graduate college in one year though, or?
No, they graduated from college in nineteen.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. So, uh, I'm thinking that would be what, the graduating class sixteen, seventeen?
So four, four or five years ago.
Yeah. So, uh.
Could be two year.
Right.
Also, they get concurrent enrollment, you know, they, a lot of times they finish.
Finish early.
Earlier.
But I think it's a, a lot of times we do ACT scores, we do all of this. Who, that shows me a rounded person right there. Because we've had kids make thirty-three on the ACT and drop out of college. So what, what are the indicators that says and, and those that in-go for those college-bound kids? So I think that number's pretty good.
Yeah, that could be just not for the graduating class of that one year. That could be maybe two years or, uh, other, other kids going back to school and graduating. I mean, but it is a good number, you know, that is a good number. You know, the only ones that, those, that two point on that seventeen point two, that's kinda, you know, that, I don't, you know, that, but that falls back what we were talking about.
And you, yeah, you get into study skills and, and I think it's, we just had a meeting, um, with parents this last week that, uh, we were talking about their student is in that Excel class and, and getting help there and learning how to study and somebody just holding them accountable and that kinda thing. So we got a lot of things going on to kinda catch those kids. Those old kids that are gonna flourish, are gonna flourish. I don't care where they're at. But who, how many of them are you gonna catch? Uh, so that's kind of our goal in, in what we're trying to do here. So, uh, but, uh, that's the college remediation report and dropout report.
Do we need a motion to accept that?
Make a motion to approve the college remediation report and dropout report. Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny, to approve the college remediation report and dropout report. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Suzie, yes.
Man, that's right before my very eyes on here.
Any new business?
No new business.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, at seven thirty-six to adjourn.
That's my favorite one.
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Suzie, yes. Next regular meeting, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.